Hello, this is Dylan Moore with Irida TV having Mark Herr from the Center for Self-Governance back on to talk a little bit more about political activism and we're going to get a bit into school boards and parents and the fact that now parents are domestic terrorists. Did you know that, Mark? That parents are domestic terrorists?
No, I'm actually shocked. I thought the parents in the United States of America were pretty good people in general, but now, I mean, I'm kind of scared for myself and even me as a parent. I mean, I didn't realize that I was a domestic terrorist. And I know you have some kiddos too, so.
Yeah, I guess it's everybody now.
I'm nervous being around you because you're a domestic terrorist.
So can you tell us a little bit about why it would be so important? Or, I mean, maybe not even important. What's with this label of domestic terrorist aimed at parents all of a sudden? Where's this coming from?
That's a really good question. So the United States is made up of seven boundaries in its government structure. And it's too deep of a dive to explain here, but basically, if you support the Seven Boundary Republic of the United States, then there is a group of people who they don't believe in that seven boundary system, and they have come up with a process in which to label people, whether they're parents currently, whether they're ranchers, small business owners, people who are protesting, you know, the forced wearing of masks or mask mandates or vaccine mandates, those kinds of things. Anyone who tends to be independent, a parent, a small business owner owns property, is in danger of being labeled a domestic terrorist. So there's two things to keep separated here. One is somebody who actually wants to terrorize people and blow things up and kill people for political purposes. And there are people who want to preserve and keep and function within the current US system. And there's a point where that label becomes muddy, or I would say it becomes a politically weaponized label, rather than a label for security and safety, it becomes someone's political label that they have to use or to advance their agenda. And that particular agenda is related to preventing people from keeping those seven boundaries in the United States Republic.
So how can they even justify that? I mean, from a legal standpoint, saying, okay, you know, a domestic terrorist is somebody who wants to blow stuff up and terrorize people from either blowing stuff up or threatening to blow stuff up. How can, how are we, is that even remotely possible to mix that definition up with parents going to school boards?
Again, great, great question. So prior to 2000, prior to the millennium, terrorism was defined in the federal law to be an international organization using violence in order to advance their political ideas, agendas, et cetera. And then what we had in 1992, we had Ruby Ridge, and the FBI was organizing to thwart white supremacists who are organizing to advance their obnoxious ideas about racial supremacy. And in one case, a guy named Randy Weaver, they, the story is complicated, so you can go to YouTube or whatever and watch the documentaries. But basically, what happened is he ended up being labeled, well, he wasn't labeled, he was a white supremacist, but the US government justified the use of deadly force based on the label of white supremacy. They ended up shooting his wife, killing his son, and some other things. He ended up winning lawsuits against them. But what this did was this added this labeling context to how law enforcement mobilizes, how it profiles. So like, you'll hear, you know, the black community saying, we're being profiled, white supremacist being profiled, that kind of stuff. So this concept of law enforcement profiling a target package for potential violence, in this case, Randy Weaver became that, kind of that.
Blueprint?
Blueprint for how to move forward with that. 1993, Waco in Texas, a group of religious folks, they had a compound, Caresh, you know, you might disagree like with his religious beliefs, et cetera. But the question was, is they were accumulating a lot of weaponry and a lot of ammunition. And so, and there's more details, again, you can research the finer details. But they ended up raiding the place and killing dozens of women and children at Waco. But this was in the name of the label of religious extremism. So white supremacy 1992, religious right wing extremism 1993. 1995, Timothy McVeigh, a military veteran, ends up coordinating and blowing up a federal building in Oklahoma City, killing children and women and children. And so some people believe that he did that in revenge for Waco as a military veteran. So you put these three events together, you have white supremacy, religious right wing extremism, and a disgruntled military veteran. So in 1996, President Clinton convinced Congress to pass what's called the Anti-Terrorism Act. And let me pause here for a second and explain to your audience why I'm telling them this story, because the labeling is the key. The definition for terrorism begins to develop over those events. So policymakers look at the events, they say, hey, these events are affecting the safety and security of society, so we need to create these new definitions.
So before this, terrorism was the international organization, like you said, that terrorizes people, yeah?
It still is till today. In order for there to be a terrorism, there must be a terrorist, and the terrorist must be connected to something international.
Okay.
Okay? And the terrorism is the act of using violence to advance a political idea or political policies or whatever.
Sure.
Okay? So 1996, President Clinton says, hey, because of these events, we have domestic terrorism occurring in the United States, white supremacy, religious right wing extremism, and disgruntled military veterans. So let's pass the 1996 Anti-Terrorism Act. And what this act did, it allowed the Department of Justice and the FBI, gave them a longer leash. Okay? So the leash used to be tighter, but because of domestic terrorism and these three events, we're going to expand the leash of the Department of Justice, so they can ask for longer sentences, they can acquire more information easier, so the search and seizure, you know what I mean, search warrants would be easier. And then, so that they could also get away with a little less focus on when they withhold evidence, making it harder on the defendant to be able to prove their innocence, if that makes any sense.
Oh, yeah.
That law basically does those three things. There's more to it.
So instead of traditionally saying, okay, well, at Waco, they broke these laws, so let's go after them that way. Whether maybe they had too many guns, or maybe they, you know, weren't supposed to be doing whatever they were doing. Instead of that, let's have a new definition where we don't need any of that. We can just go straight after them for this new definition. Yeah.
Exactly. So now 2001 happens. So we jump forward, you know, you have the World Trade Center bombings, right? But jump forward to 2001, now we have 9/11. Planes are flying, crashing here, and people are, you know what I mean, bombing buildings are falling down. Okay. The knee jerk reaction was to pass the Patriot Act in October of 2001.
Which just happened to be ready and waiting, right?
So the Patriot Act does many things regarding surveillance and authority, search warrants, FISA courts, all this stuff. But one of the, you know, I would say, one of many important factors is, is that they added a new definition for domestic terrorism in the Patriot Act. So prior to 2001, they could, they labeled people domestic terrorists, but they didn't have a domestic terrorism definition. They had an international, they had terrorism, and then you had to be connected to international, and the Department of State had to designate a terrorist. Okay? 2001 is an international terrorist event, right?
Right.
Al Qaeda. And they flew people in here illegally, and then they did it domestically, so you can say it was domestic terrorism. But remember, they're tying this definition of domestic terrorism to those three events, 92, 93, and 95, Ruby Ridge, Waco, and McVeigh. And using that to justify, saying, hey, we had a domestic terrorism event, we need a new definition for domestic terrorism. And that is in the Patriot Act. So I'm going to say what that number is, so your audience can search it themselves. It's Title 18, Section 2331, Part 5. Okay? So Title 18, Section 2331, Part 5. That's the new definition from the Patriot Act that defines domestic terrorism. What it says in the definition is, anyone who appears to intend to coerce or intimidate a civilian population, government policies, and government agents in buildings. I'm summarizing, okay?
Right, okay.
But they can go and research the, all the legal mumbo jumbo themselves. The key here is.
So appear to intimidate, that's a pretty wide, appear to intend to intimidate, that's a pretty wide ranging thing. I mean, someone could be, someone could intimidate me just from standing too close because they're big.
So that brings, that brings you right to the parents of 2021. They show up for the school board, and they're animated, you're, you're my child, it's my child, mask, breathe, uh.
Vaccines, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the, so the school board member is like, they appear to intend to coerce or intimidate the policy that I've been elected to vote on. And that's the new argument now in 2021 is, the parents appear to intend to coerce or intimidate. And because that definition exists, they can now say, the National School Board Association can label the parents terrorists.
Mm-hmm.
Then the FBI can say, whoa, hey, they appear to intend, we can now surveil, because you have the FISA courts and all those things, we can surveil. But they cannot charge them with terrorism unless currently they are connected to an international organization that has been designated terrorist by the Department of State. And that's the key here is, what the Pandora's Box from Ruby, Waco, McVeigh, and the 1996 Anti-Terrorism Act, that opened up the Pandora's Box for what these parents are now experiencing being labeled domestic terrorists.
Well, and so if they're not able to be charged as domestic terrorists, but they can get surveillance opened up on them, well, it sounds like, in a lot of cases, they don't need to be charged as domestic terrorists. You can just watch somebody until they trip over a rock the wrong way and say, ah, gotcha, we'll get you for something else, right?
And we can, we can, we have a real live example of that, January 6th, the evidence of the FBI involved in pushing people prior to January 6th, hey, we should, we should show up in DC, we should break into the building, we should break the windows. So now there's this entrapment legal doctrine. So you have due process question, you also have an entrapment question that start to become muddy or unclear to both law enforcement and to the general public for that matter, is how do you interact with society politically if, if your passion, you have to restrain your passion as you interact with things that are hurting you, right? Like, for example, people's family dying in nursing homes alone, based on a government policy.
Right.
And you're, you're like, how do you, you know, I'm supposed to.
How do I stay stoic? Yeah.
How do I say stoic? As my, you know, as my, my father dies or something, you know, okay? Or my child is being taught things that I disagree with, like.
Sex ed.
The critical race theory. I'm not saying I do, but I'm just saying, if a parent says, I disagree with comprehensive sex ed, teaching a five-year-old about sodomy, and that, then I'm like, I'm, as a parent, maybe that would trouble me. And so I would show up to the school board, and I'd say like, I can't believe you're teaching my five-year-old, uh, you know what I mean? And they're starting to sense that they're losing control over their child's future. Now, but because these mechanisms are in place, the school board can say, I'm scared, I'm afraid, I'm afraid, they appear to intend to coerce and intimidate me. Hey, government, I need, I need safety, security. And now the mechanisms are in place where the FBI can now surveil, they can now also insert themselves into your organization. And then once they're inserted into the organization, they can do what's called, I call it the honeypot gaslight doctrine. They honeypot people based on the issue, so they draw them, and then they gaslight them to action. In this case, January 6th would be that moment. And these people, many of them are still in prison, right?
Being beaten and starved, from what I, from what I understand.
Allegedly, right?
Allegedly, yes.
Those stories are coming out. But we can, we can compare it practically to the Portland Federal Building in July of last year, where groups of people came together, they were angry about things, and they decided they were going to burn down the federal building. But according to Attorney General Garland, they did it after government, it was after operating hours. The January 6 people did it during operating hours, and therefore the distinction between the legality is.
I didn't hear this one. Okay, please continue that.
Right. But the point is for people, as they go through this, and they start to wake up to this, like, what is really going on here? Is that they need to understand is that the definition of domestic terrorism, you can be labeled and you can be surveilled because the mechanisms exist, through like, like the Patriot Act and the FISA courts. And we've seen it happen practically with January 6, people still in prison, their due process, and the entrapment legal doctrine is shifting in America. So parents need to understand as they become involved in the political process, yes, they can be labeled, yes, they can be surveilled, but they cannot be charged as domestic terrorists unless they're connected to international. And this is kind of what I wanted to help your audience understand.
Yeah, this is, this is good.
Moving forward.
I mean, it's not good, it's good that you're telling us.
Is that parents politically are not seen as the primary stakeholder in their child's future.
By who?
And that, sorry?
They're not seen as, as the primary stakeholder in their child's future by who?
By, for example, the National School Board Association.
Got it.
Which, which wrote the letter to the Attorney General, actually to President Biden, requesting his help, because this, they're saying, their 14,000 school districts that they represent over the entire United States, is, they're, they're starting to experience threats of violence, acts of violence. For example, one, one act of violence that they reference is this father, whose daughter he alleged was raped, but they, at the time, the American public didn't know that there was a rape kit, and they, she was, she was raped.
The, the evidence is strong that she was raped. Yes.
And, and that the rape was conducted by a transgender who had access to the bathroom, and then raped his daughter. And so he showed up at the school board meeting, and he wasn't even there for like masks and vaccines and critical race theory. He got up to speak and was like, and he was animated because now as a father, I mean, I have daughters. I'm like, I'm trying to imagine how stoic I'm supposed to be, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
He's like, you guys haven't done anything in terms of investigation, the student who raped the daughter, your policies. And he's kind of like.
Yeah, I can't even grasp, what are you people doing standing in front of me? Yeah.
And so they, so the National School Board Association, my point is, they used his interaction as an example of acts of violence, because the police were asked by the school board to come in, and they arrested the father for speaking at the microphone and interacting with them. And he was animated, he was passionate, as if it was his child. And so the, so now there's this data point that the NSBA says, this father was arrested for violence at a school board meeting. But wait a minute, he was arrested because, and it's turned out that they literally, I mean, the news is coming out with reports that the school board has allegedly covered up the investigation, like they were not doing things. So the egg is back on the face, but the damage is already done.
Right.
Dylan, the damage is done because when the NSBA took the data to President Biden, they used that as a data point to say, we have domestic terrorism in the United States. Do you see?
I totally see it, and it's eye-rollingly stupid, but yes, I see.
The accountability on the definition, the labeling and surveillance, there are some missing checks and balances in the United States. And for me and the Center for Self-Governance, our concern for our students that we teach politics to is, you can be labeled and you can be surveilled for your political activities in the United States now. And all it takes is the governing to say, we are afraid, and we feel like you are intimidating us. The key though is, is you cannot be charged for domestic terrorism unless you're connected to an international organization designated by the Department of State as terrorist. This is super critically important for parents who want to be politically involved to understand, is that you are not considered stakeholders in your child's future, you're considered a partner. And I would recommend to parents around the United States that follow your show, or any parents for that matter across the United States, go to your individual school board members and just ask them a straight up question as two people.
As stoically as possible, yes.
Stoically as possible, without any other additional information, just ask them, well, first of all, thank them for their service, because they're elected and most of them are not paid to do this, and they come straight from the community, and they don't realize.
They don't know what they're doing, right?
They don't know what they're doing. They're just being, they're being puppeteered by external influences like the National School Board Association, which, you know, genuinely, you want your school boards to collaborate and share ideas.
Right, well, and it's National School Board Association, okay, we're all working together, like you said, to make sure that we're doing things right. Why would I suspect that? Yeah.
Until you send a letter to the president labeling parents as domestic terrorists, that opens up a whole nother pair of doors, right? Because now you get your question, wait a minute, a school board member, I'm just going to kind of play act here, it's like, Dylan, thanks, thanks for running for school board, appreciate your service to the community. I know it's a lot to take on, and you're under a lot of pressure from many parents around the community. But thanks for meeting me, and I just want to know, who do you think is the primary stakeholder in a child's future? And what would you say to that?
Well, at first, I'd be confused at the question, and then I'd think about it, and probably go, well, the parents, obviously.
Well, I appreciate that. I feel the same way as, as a parent myself. And I know that that's a pressure on you as a school board member, because who are, who are the stakeholders in a child's future in our community matters, because we all have a vested interest in their prosperity and our workforce and all that stuff. So I've written this resolution, and I would like to give it to you and ask you if you would consider introducing this at the next school board meeting. And that is, school board X from, you know, Washington State, right?
Sure.
We, the school board of this district, recognize parents as the primary stakeholders in a child's future, and sign your name to it. Would you be willing to do that at the next school board meeting? Would you, would you be willing to introduce that as a resolution? And, and all you're doing is not arguing, because, you know, some people are going to say, well, I think we're partners in, in this child's future. Or some will say parents, some will say partners, and others will literally say to you, and don't be shocked, parents, whoever does this, some will actually say, the government is the primary stakeholder. Don't respond, don't react.
Just go to the next school board member, right?
Yes. And then just keep working on building the relationships with the school board members who are from your community, understanding this, the external influence is the National School Board Association. And then your state, for example, Washington State School Board Association, which represents all of the school boards in the state of Washington. So the umbrella is the NSBA, goes to President Biden, says, hey, we have these acts, and then we're sourcing it, like the father whose daughter was raped, that's a, that's a domestic terrorism act, because he was arrested, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The, the state school board associations, the 50 of them are members of the NSBA. And then within your states, your school boards are members of the state school board association, so hierarchy kind of that way. So in terms of being a stakeholder and having influence over policies, parents, I hope you understand, right now in America, as a single individual parent, your influence is very small compared to the National School Board Association and the state school board association that your school board member is a member of. And so the influence, you're competing against influence. And now they have the advantage because they own the definition of domestic terrorism. And this brings up my second point. Number one, go and see if they will introduce this resolution, one-on-one, privately, respectfully, don't debate. They say school, government, don't just take notes and, okay, thank you for your information.
And then to add to that, and I say this because I've taken Mark's classes, don't bring up your own politics. Keep your head clear, and just say, you know, stick, stick, stick to what you came there for, and anything else, just kind of let it go through, right?
Which is, which is right now, the key thing to learn from this experience with this National School Board Association labeling parents terrorists is this, you are not the primary stakeholder in your child's future as much as you want it to be, because right now, your influence is almost zero.
In comparison with these school board associations, right?
Yes, their influence is 99.999%. And so what I'm trying to teach students around the nation is, if you want to have a seat at the table, if you want to increase your influence, like, let's put it this way, NSBA's influence is this, this is a weight scale, and the parents is like, there's nothing, right? So all I'm trying to do is help you do this right now. We're not here yet, okay? We're not even here. All we're doing is doing this. We're just shifting it slightly, okay? The second thing we need to do as parents is we need to understand the definition of terrorism. I, I don't want, I don't believe, my organization has been very clear, we do not support political violence for advancing political agendas, period.
Period.
On for any offensive reason at all. Not in the United States. Defending our nation, defending our kids, absolutely, right? Promoting it for political purposes, so I can advance my ideas, I'm going to go kill people and kill kids. No, that's absurd. Okay? The key here is that the elements in our nation that are reducing the parents' influence, they want to separate the international connections so they can start having a domestic terrorist charge. This is a long-term game, and very important for parents to understand. Increase your influence, get the school boards to introduce that resolution, to recognize you as stakeholders, and hopefully, primary stakeholders. Number two, start working with your local law enforcement, your state legislatures, hey, guys, if you're, if you guys can label and surveil parents as domestic terrorists, but you can't charge us unless we're connected to international. And if that word international is severed from domestic, that means you guys can go from label to.
To charge.
To charge, because we have an organization that the Department of State domestically has labeled to terrorists. That is incredibly important for the safety, security, political participation, parents as primary stakeholders, liberty, freedom, cliche type language. Don't let that international word be severed from the charge of terrorism.
Well, and then if, if we can be even a little more assertive than that, is try to drop this, you know, the surveillance crap out of it too, right? Right? I mean, just, just.
Yeah, that's definitely a longer, that's definitely a longer haul, because in the culture now, law enforcement, they've been trained. Parents show up and they're angry, they're going to arrest that father now. And so his right to be emotional about his daughter's rape and where's the investigation, as if he's some kind of a peasant, right?
Right.
That, I agree, Dylan, that needs to be balanced in terms of the labeling and the weaponization of government itself. I've written a paper, I would like to recommend for your audience to go read. It's at our website, centerforselfgovernance.com/pwol, PWOL.
We can make sure it's in the link below, in the section below, yeah.
The weaponization of labels. This paper is designed to help people understand this genesis of the labels domestic terrorism, white supremacy, and right wing extremism. So easy for the media just to call someone a racist now, or to call them a right wing, far-right extremist, or to call them a domestic terrorist. You know, the phrase, sticks and stones may break my bones, but names will never hurt me, that doesn't ring true in the 21st century. Sticks and stones may break my bones, but labels can get you imprisoned or killed.
Charged as a domestic terrorist, yes.
Especially when government now is weaponized to label and surveil you within your own nation, because of your political ideas and speech and thoughts and so on and so forth. The key is, parents and your, and your audiences, is be passionate, but definitely not emotional.
Okay, but I get your point from the conversation we've had so far, but please finish.
Yeah. The key is, when you go in, your passion is important, but if you go in emotional without understanding the system, understand that the influence is greater than yours, the labeling you don't control right now, and you must regain a seat at the table in the United States of politics, in order to, in order to reverse some of the things that we're experiencing, for example, parents being labeled terrorists.
Now, speaking of regaining a seat at the table, I'd like to go back to what you mentioned at the beginning, which is that we have the seven-layer boundary republic, which in a previous show, you could see on the website, we go over that in a lot more detail. We don't have time to totally break that down right now. But the, the, long story short is, we have the seven-boundary republic. Long story short is, we have the seven-boundary republic that separates all the separate powers of government that no other country on earth has or has ever had. Which is, I don't know if it's the only reason, but it's one of the prime reasons we've had, we've had so much freedom in this country. And the, our enemies, which again, Mark talks a little bit about more in, in the other video. Are bound and determined to start erasing these boundaries between various forms of government. And the school boards are a form of government and what the. With these national school board associations, or even the state school board associations, or e- e- anything, it, it doesn't matter, it could be a, a regional school board association or a sub-state, whatever. Is that it's melting the layers of government that we're supposed to be there to begin with. So now, um, President Biden. Or the president, whoever, doesn't matter who, who's the president, can go down to the local level because there's this National School Board Association. That's plugged into the back of the local school board. Giving the mortars. Now, from what I understand, the, the, the local school board doesn't have to have that, they can go, you know what? We don't need that anymore.
That is correct, yeah, and so you can see, for example, Louisiana has terminated their membership. With the National School Board Association. The school boards within Louisiana are still members of the state board association. But the state board association has severed its membership. With the National School Board Association, that is absolutely right. Now, there's also another option. If, depending on what state you live in, if the state agrees with the National School Board Association's letter labeling parents terrorist. And your school board is unwilling, or the states, sorry, the state school board association is unwilling. To condemn the letter, now there, as of today, I believe there's 22 states that have. Put out letters saying, hey, this, this was, you went too far in labeling parents terrorist, we're, we're getting a lot of pushback, we don't support violence, amen. Uh, but you're, you're labeling parents and that's a problem and parents are starting to, you know, get upset with this. Is, if your state does not, your state school board association does not. Condemn the National School Board Association's letter, then your school boards have the ability to withdraw from the state school board association itself. It's a private membership association, so they're not obligated to be a member.
Well, and, and I mean, going back to labels and, and, uh, words and stuff, just the sound of it, the state school board association, well, that sounds like something we're supposed to be a part of, right? The National School Board Association, oh, we're supposed to be a part of that, right? There must be some sort of law saying, no, there's none of that, it's like you said, it's, it's a private organization, you can, you can disconnect yourself from that. Or the school board could disconnect itself from that matrix anytime it feels like.
It's like when I get on the plane and they say that, um, if you're not, if you don't wear the mask, you're breaking federal law. There is no federal law regarding the masks mandates. There is however, an executive order, and that's not federal law. So people get confused over the nuance, just like they get confused over the definition of domestic terrorism.
Right, so can you talk a little bit about? Getting a little more concrete about, you know, the, the students you've trained and how important it is that, so the, the, there's all these. And we, we didn't talk about this that much in, in the other video that we talked about, maybe we can get into it a little bit here. Is the effect of regional government, right? So we've got all these layers and then just to put it, you know, briefly, I mean, like, look at the federal level, level. We've got, uh, an executive branch, we've got a legislative branch, and then we've got a, actually, imagine it at the state level, because I can make a better example. You know, we got an executive, a legislative and a judicial. But right now, because of the COVID plandemic. All of the governors, except one, South Dakota, declared a state of emergency that never ends. And the legislative power of the legislative branch appears to be shifting more and more over to the executive side. Well, that's erasing that barrier. Between the two, and so CSG is teaching, okay, how do, how do we start putting those barriers back? Because if those barriers are put back, then power can't be, can't be conglomerated into one unit. And then even if you have people that want to take freedom away, they can't get the power to do it. And the regional, go ahead.
Think about it, you think about it this way, Dylan. Most people just want to use the refrigerator. They want the refrigerator to work properly. Okay, so, most people aren't gonna put their energy into learning how the refrigerator works and how they can fix the refrigerator. But oppression and chaos are the reasons why we have government. We, we want to prevent the chaos of, of terrorism, we want to prevent the oppression of, of these. You know, uh, people have said they've called it, um, the tyrannical orders, the executive orders of their governors, right? So there's this tension between. The design of the refrigerator, I'm gonna say the design of government.
Yeah.
And trying to help people understand the reason why it's designed that way. And if you think about the metaphor of the refrigerator. You just want it to work, and I get that, and you just want your stuff to be cold and you want stuff to be frozen. And when you open it, you want the milk to be cold and you want the ice cream to be not, be soft, you want it to be yummy, you know what I mean?
Right.
You want to preserve your cucumbers, right? You, you want, okay. Government has that same kind of. Thing to it, we just want the government to work, not to oppress us and to prevent the chaos, right?
Right.
It's fair, Democrat, Republican, independents, whatever you are, whoever you are. Okay, so the design of government matters. The structure of how that refrigerator works matters, if, if you want to get that result of, uh, preserved cucumber and cold milk, et cetera. If we want to prevent chaos and, and, and limit oppression. Then the design of the system, the, the refrigerator matters. And so what you're describing is the design of government. Um, our system was designed with seven boundaries primarily to do two things, to prevent the oppression of the. English system that they had separated from, because they had a seven-year revolution and they, they won their independence. But then the system that they created right after that began to collapse very quickly into chaos.
And you're talking about the Articles of Confederation.
Yes, in 1783, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to do a complete history lesson here, other than just to say. The founders of the United States had their problems with slavery and gentrification and white male privilege and all that stuff we're talking about today. The key though is that they designed, they, they designed the refrigerator differently than the one that they did after they won their independence from England. Okay, and when they designed it, they calculated the effects of the English system and they calculated the effects of their chaotic system. And they designed a new system with seven boundaries in it. Uh, like a refrigerator has different designs and, and, and pipes on the back and there's little fans, you can hear them working sometimes. Our system of government was designed to limit oppression and prevent chaos, both. However, there are people who do not agree with that design. And they believe. They believe it's more important to prevent chaos than it is to limit oppression. So some of the symptoms we're experiencing in the United States right now. That people are perceiving this increased level of oppression is because those people who do not agree with that design of prevent or. Limiting oppression and preventing chaos. They believe more in preventing chaos than they do limiting oppression.
Well, and then, I, I, I just gotta, I just gotta stab this one in there.
Sure.
They have a different definition of chaos than I would have a definition of chaos for sure.
Right.
But just wanted to throw that out there, yeah.
Domestic terrorism and, yeah, the, the, and this is the kind of the key for, for your audience. In, in Center for Self-Governance, our goal is to teach you how to participate in, in this. Mainly delineating the differences in the definitions of words and phrases, like domestic terrorism. Right, because it's hard for people to separate, there's a charge, but wait, I can be labeled and surveilled? If you can separate those two, you have to do that in your mind, or I have to spend a lot of time talking about it, most people are like, okay, I was done a half hour ago.
Right, right.
Right, okay, I get that. The key though is to understand, you want the refrigerator to work. It matters who fixes it. It matters who understands the design. And our society was, it was, the experiment was, is that for those of you who want the government to work right. Limit oppression, prevent chaos, you know, that kind of, I want a system that's going to do those things. It's important for you personally to learn the system, how the refrigerator works. And, and if you're willing to learn how to fix it yourself. Very important concept in politics in 2021 and beyond.
And what fascinates me about this concept is that. Listeners may have noticed that we haven't actually brought up once re-electing school board members. What, 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 not once have we brought up elections, not once have we brought up, okay, the Democrats have to do this or the Republicans have to do that, none of that. Now, we're not saying that's not important.
They are important, yes.
Yes.
They're very important.
That's a separate conversation, yeah, that's a separate conversation and nobody's having the conversation that we're having, what, we are, you and I are having this conversation right now. But it's a very limited amount of people are having this conversation of, um. Switching from refrigerator to airplane. Everybody's arguing over who's, who's flying the airplane, nobody's paying attention to who's making sure the airplane is functioning properly.
Right.
If it's gonna crash and burn, it doesn't matter who's flying it.
Because most, the human nature is, I just want the refrigerator to work. I just want the plane to work, I don't care about, guys, I don't care about the design, I don't care about the controls. Just, I, I want to get back to my life and please get me, I want to land in San Diego so I can enjoy my vacation.
Right.
The plane, just please make the plane work, you know what I mean? Make the refrigerator work. Government is kind of the same, and, and, and in America, the experiment was that the governed, who naturally want, they just want it to work. They're not concerned about the design and fixing it. They easily will complain when the refrigerator doesn't work. Okay?
But they don't want to go in and fix it.
They don't want to, because, because it takes a lot of energy to learn the refrigerator and then you have to put energy to fix the refrigerator, right? Most people are gonna take the easy way out, Dylan, and that's the key here with parents. You're feeling the pain, the refriger, the government's not working, the refrigerator's not working right. And so your natural gut instinct is to show up to the school board and, and your passion. Make sure you're able to delineate between the emotion of your child's future. Because what you're really experiencing, if, if I have any credibility with your audience, is. Your influence is almost zero. We need to help you increase your influence. And identify where the external influences are greater than yours, like the NSBA, being able to label you. And then mobilize federal resources to surveil you.
Right.
That's important for you to understand in your strategy of like, I just want critical race theory to be unbiased. Or I don't want my child to be taught sodomy at five, you know, you know, things like that. If you want influence over those things, it's important for you to understand the system. What's causing your influence to be reduced, that's like a symptom that we can troubleshoot and we can go directly to. Your state school board association and the, and the National School Board Association. And so now strategically, politically. How do we start shifting that influence bar? Well, go to your school board members, offer the resolution, go to your sheriff, talk to your sheriff, your city police chief, it's like, hey, I'm a parent, you're a parent. Are we terrorists now? And what do I do? And ask them, I mean, it's a legitimate question to ask them, genuine questions, like, how do I not get labeled and surveilled as a terrorist?
Right.
What is that? What, can you give me some advice? Would you be willing to come talk to our parents so they can learn? Hey, guys, this, this is how you, you, you don't get labeled and surveilled as a terrorist. That's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
The other is, is, hey, would you guys be willing to, you know, help us prevent the international word from being disconnected so that. We can protect people's right to participate in the political process in America.
And I, I want to follow that up, because like I said, I, I have taken some of, of Mark's classes and one of the homework assignments that I had on these classes. Was to speak to an elected representative and I had, the assignment included a couple of questions. And part of the assignment was, do not bring up your own politics. At all, nothing, you, 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 you just ask and you, and you hear what the person has to say. And I ended up speaking to a county councilwoman. And I couldn't, actually, and I was speaking to two, uh, because I only had to speak to one. Uh, this was actually fascinating, I, I, I sent out messages to five councilmen. All five of them got back to me saying that they wanted to talk to me. I didn't even have time, to talk to all five of them, so I picked two.
Wow.
And, um, I, I picked the two that were, I, I would say, in quotes, my political enemies, you know, people on the other side of the political aisle from me.
That's very good.
Yeah.
Is, is, don't just go to your echo chamber.
Exactly.
In America, united, united doesn't mean we're united, uh, Republicans and Democrats over here. United is, your, your family can talk politics and religion at the table again.
Right. And so, um, in, in one of these conversations, first of all, um, I mean, they were so happy I called, and they were just like. I, I, I mean, there was one of them, I, I had to tell him, dude, I gotta go back to work, I, I don't have time for this, sorry, I gotta go.
The number one experience of our students in CSG is, if you, if you would just resist your tendency of trying to convince them that your issue is the most important issue of all time.
Right.
Which they are very important, but in terms of the refrigerator. It's, it's more important that you figure out what's wrong with the refrigerator than it is to figure out that your daughter is leaving the refrigerator door open. And that's now caused the compressor to break down in the back, I mean, that's a little more complicated, but you will get. 50 to 60% more time of information and feedback if you go in that first relationship building meeting. And, and not bring up your issue.
Yeah, well, and then, I, I wanted to bring up this one specifically, which is, I was having this conversation with this councilwoman. And, you know, I, I, I'm just poking and, and letting the information come out, I'm just, you know, calmly asking, prodding questions, kind of like, you know, doing an interview, right? And the, the conversation came up that she, the, the county was getting this federal money. For, to, to help with COVID relief, and it was like $160 million or something. And I, and I thought, well, that sounds like a lot of money to me, but I don't know if that's a lot of money to the county. So I asked her, I said, i- i- is, I don't know if that's a lot of money to the county or not, is it? And she said, well, the county makes 800 million a year in, in, or in taxes, and I said, so it's basically not a lot of money. And she said, yeah, it's really not that much money. And I said, it's, it sounds like it's enough money to, to have something, but not enough to fix anything with, right? And she said, yeah. And, uh, at the end of the conversation, I asked her if she had any more questions for me, and there was this pause and she goes, how would you spend this money?
She asked you.
She asked me and I was like. I have influence, whoa. She, she was legitimately asking me, she wanted to hear my opinion on how to best spend this money. And I, I couldn't believe it, it was just one conversation with my political enemy. Right, and.
On the part, on the partisan level, your political enemy, but on the, on the airplane?
Yes.
And maybe we could rephrase it by saying. She turns the plane in a direction you don't want it to go.
Correct, correct.
And. But what you both have in common is that you want the refrigerator to work.
Yes.
Right?
I mean, I, I presume that she wants the refrigerator to work, yeah, there, I, I know there are some out there that don't want the refrigerator to work, but we'll assume that she does, yeah.
Kind of like the NSBA doesn't want the parents to be primary stakeholders anymore in the child's future.
Right.
And, and that's the value of going to your, uh, uh, of our, of our classes and our training is teaching our political leaders. In training, how to develop the relationship, how to identify who's trying to crash the plane and who's actually trying, who wants the plane to work. There's people who want to crash it and replace it, and there's people who just want the plane to work right. Is, makes sense?
Yes.
Is, how do we build a coalition of people who want the plane to work right? And how do we prevent? What does that look like in the 21st century? How do we prevent people who want to crash the plane? I mean, to me, that's, that would be an act of terrorism, the national security threat.
That would be chaos, I would say, but, uh.
Like what we're experiencing now with, uh, there's, do I mask or do I, I go into this business and I can't? And this one, they like, show me your vaccine, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean, it's, it's just kind of created a lot of division and, and a lot of contention and conflict in the United States and.
And, um, I know you gotta go soon, I, I, and I, I just wanted to bring up my experience that I had taking your classes and doing the homework. Because there, there is this gut feeling to say, well, if I go talk to the sheriff or if I go talk to the school board member, why would they give me the time of day? And the, the experience that I had is, not only will they give you the time of day, they are like. So grateful that you even asked.
Yes.
And you, but, and by, by getting in there and, and keeping, keeping your politics out of it. Immediately develops this relationship. Where, and now because you have that relationship, like, I, I mean, ju- just in the one conversation, now she's asking me, what, what would you do with this money? And, um, I don't know if she actually, I, I had an idea. And what's being done with that money is what my idea was, I don't know if that was their idea already, or if I influenced that, I, I've, I have no idea. But, um. What, what, what Mark's teaching. Again, not, not to, not to put, put down, you know, we need to have the right people elected. This is systematic politics, right? This is looking at, at the, the maintenance of the system and it's, the first time I've ever heard it was from Mark and the Center for Self-Governance. And this is, this is a way to really start being politically active, being effective. And identifying what the issue is that needs to be solved, and the issue is.
Right.
The boundaries between the government.
Yes.
We have the seven-layer bounded republic and, and our enemies are. Working to see, how can we erode all these boundaries one by one until there's just one conglomerated blob of. working to see how can we erode all these boundaries one by one until there's just one conglomerated blob of government that has all the power like Plato described in his Republic.
Yes.
Right?
But I absolutely, I um, we we, our our goal is to train people in understanding their own human nature in the political process of developing relationships and identifying the structures of government that will balance the prevention of oppression with the prevention of chaos. And our system of government was, it was designed for that. There are people who don't agree with that design. And so in the political world, that's called systematic politics, is competing for keeping, modifying or eliminating the political boundaries uh, in our system, in our refrigerator, in our government system. And um, right now, front and center is the parents and they can see it, they can feel it, they've been labeled because they're they're purposely being excluded from the the table of influence over their child's future. And the 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 political weaponization of the label domestic terrorists, now it's the political weaponization of government through the FBI, the Attorney General and the Department of Justice. What comes next is they 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 have to separate the international word at the at the federal level. And so there are things that we can do, I I mean practically right now. But it's not some, I can tell you what to do on this instance and then you can have me back on later. Okay, tell me what to do now. Our training is so that you can think for yourself as a political leader in your community. It doesn't mean you have to run for office. But you're just, you're the mechanic studying the system and figuring out why the compressor in the in the fridge isn't working, why the school board is not listening to the parents, what what what's causing that?
Yes.
And you can, you can troubleshoot it back to the state school board association, which is tied back to the National School Board Association. And there's a lot more, there's a lot more at the other levels of government and we're happy to teach your anyone, anybody in your community who would like to learn systematic politics, we're we're more than honored to to become part of your journey.
Can you tell everybody how they can get this training?
So go to our website, center for self governance dot com. Everything is located there. Uh, the paper that I told you about backslash P W O L, political weaponization of labels. Um, read the papers, you can do our training, we have films on there, all kinds of cool things for you to interact with, to meet your needs for your community.
Excellent. Well, uh, Mark, I know you have to go, so thanks again for your time and then hopefully we'll be speaking to you soon.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me on, Dylan.